There he is.
Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the September 8, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please call the poll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Shannon Bays, County Council Stephen Madcor. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It's so nice to see so many happy people in the room today. We do exist, yes. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. As a side note, I will be leaving this meeting at 11:00 a.m. this morning, and I will pass the gavel to our Vice Chair Martha Schrader. I will be attending a briefing on the new red flag warning in Clackamas County regarding a possible fire danger situation this weekend. Hopefully, nothing will happen of that, but that's a briefing that I need to go to. Gary, would you please read the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First up is a public hearing, and it is a second reading of Ordinance 02-2022 repealing Chapter 8.10, short-term rentals, from the Clackamas County Code. Stephen Madcor, County Council, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a second reading on a repeal of an ordinance, Chapter 8.10 concerning short-term rentals. In November of 2020, a prior board had adopted this provision in our code, but that board did not fund the program. There was no application fee. There was no processing fee. So, the program was essentially idle. They delayed implementation to a later date, and then staff would return it to the board, and they would delay implementation to a later date. And then, more recently, in May of this year, staff again presented before the board, and there was another delay at that particular time. It's the proverbial kicking the can down the road. And so, County Council has proposed that we get this off our books so as not to confuse the public or give people a false sense of that this code provision is in play, because it is not if it's not funded. There's no application fee. There's no enforcement mechanism. There's no staff committed to reviewing any of the provisions in there. It doesn't mean it cannot come back. It could come back next week were this board to say, "Let's fund it through this mechanism or that mechanism." So, until that does happen, though, it is County Council's recommendation that you remove it from the county code to eliminate any type of confusion for the public. And if the board has desires to resurrect it and implement it, it's well thought out. It's well drafted. It's a good code. It just isn't in operation right now. So, with that, if the board were to say, "Yes, repeal it," it would be effective 90 days. From 90 days from now, it would be off our books. Again, it's not entirely eliminated. It still is in our office if you want it. It just isn't going to be on our code for public viewing and consideration. I'm here to answer any questions that the board might have concerning that.
Do Commissioners have any questions or comments at this point before I open the public hearing? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I'm interested in hearing what the public has to say, but I did ask for all of the testimony on this issue through the duration since this came up. And it's a lot of testimony here, and most of the testimony that we have received is a plea for us to not, to definitely continue to regulate short-term rentals and to figure out a way to do that. And since the last public hearing, there's been more information coming to us from folks up on the mountain, asking us to continue to regulate. So, Stephen, my question for you is, and I know Commissioner Savis has some, he came up with a proposal, wanted to look at some things, and most of that proposal includes the regulations that the original, that are currently in, it's 8.010? Is that what it's called?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Going from memory here with my code numbers. What about if we keep this on the books, continue to work on it, and revise it, but not remove it? Why is that a possibility before us today?
Did my hair get any grayer?
Um, no. Well, maybe. You got a little dark right on the side here.
Not to correct you, but we do not regulate short-term rentals, and that's the whole point. We have language on our books, but nobody does anything with it.
Right.
If somebody were to say, "Hey, I want to register my short-term rental," we would say, "We don't have a registration program in place." We have it on our books, but we don't have it funded. We don't have it implemented. We have it devoted staff to it. Again, if this board were to say today, "Let's impose an application fee on those who want to operate short-term rentals within Clackamas County, unincorporated areas of Clackamas County, an application fee of blankety-blank dollars to implement this, which requires inspections, which requires enforcement. You have to have a fire extinguisher. You have to have a strapped water heater. You have to have insurance, things like that, adequate parking, a review mechanism." Then, you would have a up-and-running operational enforcement mechanism, and you would be regulating short-term rentals. Right now, what we have is language. That's non-binding.
Yeah. Well, I like the language that we have, but I do think that, given the amount of time that's gone by, we have new awareness, and different jurisdictions have done other things, like there's been examples out of Klatzip County, which looks at certain zones of how many short-term rentals should be allowed. We have examples from Lincoln County, where they allow so many short-term rentals, and then they open it up at a certain amount of time. We have certain zones that are highly tourist zones, like up on the mountain, and we could borrow from some of those jurisdictions to improve. The regulations that were developed before, but I am really concerned about going backwards on this. I would much rather see us move forward and begin this process. And if we do look at a fee, and we decide that we are only going to have more commercial interests pay that fee and not the homeowner that's renting out a room in their house, I would be all in support of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Savis, you're up next.
Yeah, well, along the lines of Commissioner Fisher's comments, when we last discussed this, my goal was, and still is, to come back to the board with a refined proposal that staff could support. And I really believe that, at this point, I would like to really table the matter, not kick the can. I don't appreciate that characterization. There's no effort here to kick the can. I'm actually half-scheduled, finally, a meeting with some people that actually operate short-term rentals this afternoon. We have had the break. I don't know, again, we're not, you know, to me, this, if I had a preference of setting the agenda or this hearing, I would schedule it for enough time to where we come back with that. But I think this, it would be perceived if we went through with the proposal today to cancel this or to just eliminate this ordinance altogether, that it would leave the impression that it's not going to come back. And I think that would probably anger people. I think this forces us to deal with it and keep it on the books. So, I propose, and I won't be supporting, I won't be supporting putting this to bed. I want to keep it alive. I just want the adequate time. I made a promise to you all that I would come back with something, and I intend to.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
I have no problem voting to repeal a regulation that is not being enforced. It has no meaning. This morning, I asked my policy adviser to look at one of the other counties that has been regulating STRs, and I found out just a moment ago that they put a moratorium on new STR permits. This STR issue is growing every day, and the longer we wait to regulate it, the bigger the problem will become for our citizens who are being adversely affected by STRs. I would like to see a regulation written that we could actually utilize and enforce, one that would be efficient, one that would not require a large bureaucracy to oversee, and one that would result in making the lives of our people who own properties adjacent to STRs much more livable. I would like to see a permit holder required to prove residency. I would like to see a permanent residency requirement for all STR holders to prevent the absentee landlords from converting our rental inventory to STRs, which is adversely affecting the lifestyle of our people, in particular, up in the mountain, who would like to work a government camp and have to go all the way to Gresham to find an apartment now. I would like to see a limit on the number of people to avoid large gatherings at STRs, which has been reported to us as a very adverse problem, particularly around the government camp in Welch's area. And I would like to see fines set for advertising online without a registration, and I would also like to see fines for violating STR requirements. I would like, Commissioner Savis said, I would like, I've asked this morning for a couple of examples of county regulations that actually work from my policy adviser, and I would like to take that and meet with the people of the Hoodland CPO as soon as possible, sit down and chop through it, and come back with something that I can present to the board and the staff of the county that will work. And I would, again, I would like to see this happen as soon as possible. The pressure from the constituents that I've heard from is pressing, and this needs to be fixed. And so, I advocate removal of our current regulation that has not been enforced. It means nothing. It means less than this piece of paper right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Thank you. We've been working on this a long time, but we are faced with a conundrum. And I've been struggling with that conundrum. We know this is a problem. We realize that people in areas of our county, their lives are getting disruptive. There's noise issues. There's all these kinds of problems with bad actors who are renting out homes and disturbing communities. What I worry about with this piece, it has become clear that, at this point, we do not have the funding to enforce. Gary, is that kind of where we are with this at this point? I think it is.
You've not identified what funding source you would use
To do this.
To shore up the program and hire the staff to implement.
And so, the conundrum is, we haven't done that background work to the point of how we're going to manage that, because more than likely, given budgetary issues that we are going to be facing, we would have to drop, we would have to revisit our priorities as a commission, and something would have to drop off. We are trying to be very stringent in our budget, and my concern is having something on the books that, at this point, there is no way to enforce it. So, I'm trying to find a middle ground, because the problem will exist. Commissioner Fisher has been extremely diligent in pulling together all that information. I hear that Commissioner Savis has continued willing to work on this, and it sounds as if Commissioner Scholl, our colleagues, are, I really want to continue to look at it. So, I guess my question is this. What would happen if we table this for now and give our colleagues even more time to figure this out, and if we move forward with it in the end, we need to have a commission discussion about what we're going to remove more than likely from our budget or figure out another way to fund it? That is the difficulty of the decision we're trying to figure out today, and we're trying to be sensitive to the needs of the people on the mountain and other folks in their communities in unincorporated areas. So, Mr. Madcor, what would a motion to table do? Would it allow our colleagues to continue to work on this and us to work as a commission? If this is what our priority is going to be, what other priority, you know, what are we going to do? And, okay, so, that's my first question.
I would avoid the motion to table, and I would just vote this down.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way, you'll, this stays on your books. We're not coming back for another reading.
Okay, so you would say to remove it now, but continue the work to try and figure this out?
No, I'm saying if there's no support to repeal it today, then you just move on. This stays on the books. The direction to staff is unclear. If the board wants to come up with their own version of things, that's fine, but I will say, the version that you have before you today is a result of years of staff contributions
Right.
From vetting codes throughout the entire country. So, what you have before you is very good language. It is a good program. It's just not funded. So, I don't, I mean, it doesn't address everything that Commissioner Scholl said or Commissioner Fisher in terms of prohibiting conversions and things like that, but it does regulate short-term rentals. And you do have to register, register and be licensed and abide by group gathering requirements and sanitary requirements and noise requirements. I would just say, do not agree to repeal it today, and I would consider this matter. I would not bring it forward, because it's been a long struggle, and it would just be on our books, and it would remain indefinitely until such time as this board gave direction to Administrator Schmidt to resurrect it and fund it.
How many years has this been being grappled with, this board and previous boards?
Well, the prior board adopted it in November of 2020, and that was after, I think, 15 policy sessions or something along those lines.
15 policy sessions before 2020.
So, I guess the other comment I would have to my colleagues, if we don't repeal it and we leave it on the books, are we going to continue to let other colleagues work on it? And are we going to be clear to our public today that, right now, we have something on the books that we have no way to fund, and that, that we don't want to set false expectations that this is going to be immediately enforceable? Our staff has said that they don't have the capacity at this time to do this level of enforcement unless we figure out funding mechanisms. So, colleagues, I would like to hear from you. Do you just want to leave it on the books, understanding that, at this point in time, it will be unenforceable? Do we want to rescind it and then just keep working on it? Those, to me, seem to be two choices. I am not Solomon. I don't want to split the baby, but I'm going to ask you guys to weigh in and tell me what your thoughts are, so we can, again, if you want to keep it fine, but it is not going to be enforceable at this time. So...
We have two other Commissioners in the queue, and I've yet to comment on this. And we have public hearing. We have people who want to talk on this. Commissioner Savis?
Okay, so if I understand correctly, Mr. Madcor, procedurally, we don't need to table it. We could just vote no on the repeal.
Correct.
And it would stay on the books, which is basically the same thing, essentially.
Wait, I'm sorry. I'll interject. The last, last time this was before the board in May, you extended it till July 2023, so it would be in place until then.
Right, right. So, as I stated earlier, I'll just repeat this for Commissioner Schrader's sake and my colleagues. I appreciate Commissioner Scholl's input. So, it sounds like from, what I heard from Commissioner Scholl as well, is that he does have interest in solving this problem, and that's what we're trying to do, solve it in a way that, you know, allows STRs to be legal and also protects the local neighbors and the citizens that are having, experiencing the complaints. I think that is what we've heard a lot of input for. I've been to every community meeting from the beginning of this, and sure, the politics have changed on the board. I understand that. That's why this hasn't really been codified or refined to the point where it's applicable and it works. But I, as I made my promise to you all, and again, my afternoon meeting at 4:00 this afternoon with some people that have done this as a profession, to bring back other county models and other things that we can do this in a minimalist way that does not have an impact on the general fund. And that was my promise to you then, and that's my promise to you today.
Thank you, Commissioners. I am going to ask if you would respectfully not repeat yourselves, because we have a lot of work to get through today. We have an entire room full of people here to testify not on this issue, on two other issues. We've heard this to debate ourselves back and forth on an issue that we've debated 20 and 50 times before. We're not getting anywhere on. Commissioner Fisher, please be brief.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So, I would be in support of voting this down and working quickly on figuring out how we're going to enforce it. And we do have two Commissioners, Chair Smith and Commissioner Schrader, who are hopefully going to Washington, D.C. next week. I would propose, I whispered to Commissioner Scholl, said, "Are you available next week?" Commissioner Savis, I think you might be available. We could potentially notice some work sessions, and we can go through the ordinance, the regulations, talk about things, and come up with at least somewhat of a strategy, at least from the board as to the regulation piece. And then, the funding piece, I know staff has made one proposal. Maybe they could come up with some frameworks for some others, and we could come back with something. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and do this. I think the three of us, I loved what Commissioner Scholl said as far as all the things that he wants to see. I think we're going to be in alignment on what we need for our community, but we just need to do the work. So, that would be my proposal, is to vote this down and get to work next week.
There will be no public meetings next week without the Chair and Vice Chair present. Okay. Period. That's a set policy. That I think everybody can agree with. We've already notified staff. I think there's enough information out there that you folks can share through email, and that it's not serial voting. Okay. I'm going to hold my comments for now, but I will open the public meeting, the public hearing on this issue. We have at least one card, one person who wants to testify on that. If anybody else in the room wants to testify on this public hearing, please go over here, register, put your hand up, whatever. The person in the queue is Richard Harris. Please come forward, state your name, your address. I thought you were a famous actor at one time.
I remember that one.
Yes, yes. Sir, yes, and you have-
What's the most famous song that he sang?
You have three minutes, and bring the microphone close so we can hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've already had one meeting with you. I did it by Zoom. I didn't realize you didn't see me when I did it. So, last night, after receiving another rejection notice because the words mean nothing, I decided that I need to create a picture book, because the word "not allowed" creeps up into every discussion from the county. And what does the word "not allowed" mean? A lot of us have definitions of it. I one time asked the county to define it. They wanted me to pay them for that definition, so I didn't do it. So, basically, what I did last night is I went through a little driveway to show you what exactly is happening when an individual decides to have an Airbnb on a private driveway and what the potential hazards and destruction of the neighborhood can be. And so, basically, the first page is just, that's a protest sign that we have on the driveway. The owner of the Airbnb sent an attorney's demand letter for us to take it down. They said we were not allowed to protest it. They actually said that they are permitted, which I know that's not true, because there's no permit. The second page shows the actual driveway. That's what people come down to go to this particular Airbnb. Usually, for all of us that live on this particular piece of property where the driveway is, we have to go through a conditional use for land use. This doesn't exist with Airbnbs. It just doesn't exist. No matter how many times we rewrite it and rewrite it to the county, they keep coming back with, "It's not allowed, but we don't enforce it. The words mean nothing." And so, what we're trying to do is to get people to see what can happen when the words mean nothing and the owner of the Airbnb knows it. And so, what the next picture is, is a picture of coming down the road to where the Airbnb is actually at and what they've built up. This is their front yard. The front yard now has an entertainment section where you can have a barbecue. You can have music, and you can talk. If you look to the right a little bit of that picture of the entertainment center, you'll see that's the driveway. It's approximately 10 to 15 feet away from the driveway, a shared driveway. It used to be private property. It's not private property anymore, because this individual has been allowed to open up an Airbnb, have their customers come down the driveway, which now has converted it into a commercial public driveway. We have no recourse. We keep asking over and over and over, "Please let us have the conditional use." They keep telling us, "No, no, no. There is no conditional use." You have to work on this, because this is becoming a problem. This is just a few weeks, two months ago when I did this originally, and now I have a whole entertainment center coming up there that we have to deal with, and an aggressive individual who thinks that they can do whatever they want, and we have no recourse. I suppose we can sue everybody, but we're trying not to do that. We're trying to get you to help us with this. We need that help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate very much. You've offered an interesting perspective, and you use something here, Stephen, he, conditional use application. Has that ever been tried or discussed?
I'm not familiar with Mr. Harris's situation. This is the first I've heard of it.
But that's quite a possibility on that. Anybody else in the room, thank you, sir, who would like to testify at this public hearing on this issue? Because I have a whole bunch of cards here that the folks showed up on other issues, which I'm anxious to get to as well. I have not said anything on this. When I became Chair in about 20 months ago, I inherited, as we all did, we inherited this, I'm going to call it a conundrum, because that's what it is. The passports and commissions have not been able to figure out how to fully fund this and regulate it properly. I do think that there is an issue with people's behavior, and I do think that somehow we need to address that. I do think livability is important. I live in rural Clackamas County, and there's been issues where I live, thinking, "What's going on with my neighbors or whatever?" But I try to have a conversation with them. There has been some attempts by Lincoln County Commissioners and the public down there to pass regulations on rentals, and it has been overturned at a higher court level. Our county attorneys are very mindful of that. We don't want to have that happen here in this county. I also believe if we were to wholly do away with vacation rentals, Airbnb, I do believe that's a constitutional infringement on people's private property rights. Everybody has a right to rent out a room in their house, and I'm very concerned about doing a county-wide measure like that to totally do away with them when I think it's a feasible situation and, in some cases, an economic necessity. As our population ages, there's an opportunity for them to, you know, gain a little more money, to help pay their property taxes. I don't want to have to do away with that. Organizations like the, quote, Airbnb Group and the VRBO- have implemented regulations on their own this summer because they know parties are a problem. These all-night parties where there's too many cars in the driveway and garbage is left is untenable for me. I do not think that is, is a way people should behave. And, um, I don't frankly know what to do about it. Even if we were to implement this, people would expect the sheriff's office to send patrol cars and take action. Regardless of what we do at this BCC, the sheriff will respond to calls in order of urgency. And quite frankly, this is not an urgency from the sheriff's department as their patrol staff has told me. There are other, quote, "real crimes" that are being committed in our county that takes our patrol staff on a Friday night or a Saturday night or a Sunday night that takes them away. And yes, the good citizens of Clackamas County have added a tax to, um, increased by 50% a tax for more officers' patrols, but that won't even come into effect next year because the tax won't even be collected until November. So these problems are real. We are not trying to discount them. I think what you see at this board, we all acknowledge something needs to be done. What we think, how the process goes, is where we, you might see disagreement. We do have a motion set up to repeal this ordinance because if we were to leave it on the books, it would bring a false sense of security and hope that actually, if I make a call, something's going to be done on this. It is a very, very hard decision. Stephen, I have a question.
Yes.
Are STRs illegal?
Are short-term rentals illegal?
Illegal.
No, they are not.
So they're allowed?
In, in Clackamas County?
Yes.
We changed our code, our zoning ordinance, to allow them. And that ordinance was appealed to Luba. Luba had a ruling that said that our ordinance was too broad because it allowed it in exclusive farm zones and, and, uh, farm and forest zones. But we still allow them in other districts. So it's not as clear as it could be, but they are technically allowed by our zoning code in-
Unincorporated areas.
Unincorporated areas of Clackamas County that aren't, um, exclusive farm and, and forestry.
And the natural resource zones is what Luba kicked back, saying that Airbnbs are not allowed in the natural resource zones. So that takes that off the books. I am, um, I understand my colleagues and I really appreciate their passion to do something about this. I like Commissioner Shoal's idea. I think quite possibly we're going to entertain a vote today. And if any of my commissioners want to come back with a very solid, solid program that we can implement that doesn't cost, um, further, uh, hit to our general fund budget, you know, I'm, I'm all for that. It's just, it's a matter of practicality. You know, this, it's very simple. If you have a house up there, "I don't want that person to rent it out." Well, it's their private property right to be able to do that. And until the state of Oregon changes the constitution, that's where we're at on this. You know, we all want what we want, and me included. And I don't get, you know, close to anything what I want all the time either. I'm just here to chair the meetings and try to work with staff to be as practical as possible to the 420-some-thousand residents and the 1.3 million acres in our county, and that is very difficult. And with that in mind, Gary, your light is on.
Chair, we're still in the public hearing. Would you allow us to see if anyone online would like to comment? And then would you close the hearing?
Do we have anybody online?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I do not have a list of registered participants at this time, but if anyone online was unable to register, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. I see no raised hands online, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I am now going to close the public hearing on this, and I will entertain a motion.
I move that we repeal the ordinance in question.
There's specific language on the top of page two, Commissioner Shoal.
Okay. I move we approve, um, I, I move we approve ordinance 02-2022, repealing chapter 8.10, short-term rentals from the Clackamas County Code, and direct the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
I will second that.
Commissioner Shoal has moved to approve ordinance 02-2022, repealing chapter 8.10, short-term rentals from the Clackamas County Code, and direct the clerk to read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Commissioners, any further discussion? I am welcome, I will say this. I am welcome any ideas that my commissioners that can come up with, that can pay for a program that gives peace and safety and good public health to the people who are most affected by the bad players in the county. I am not against that at all. Please be clear on that. Mr. Schrader?
Yes, um, again, I'm trying to be Solomon today. I, uh, will vote to do this repeal with the understanding that it's a really difficult discuss, decision, and with the understanding that this will be a template to continue to work on it with our colleagues who want to move forward with something. My biggest concern is this, that leaving it on right now without funding just does not make sense to me. We need to figure out a way to fund it. I think it's a template, and I would appreciate my colleagues having continued discussions about it. It's not over till it's over. So, uh, thank you, Chair, for letting me make that statement. This is going to be a hard decision, but so be it.
Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, just briefly, I don't think it's that hard of a decision. I, I just think that, again, people are going to have the impression that we're walking away from this. I don't want to do that. I'm not going to abandon our commitments. Too many people have invested a lot of time in this, and, uh, the impression would be that we're walking away. And I'm, I'm just talking, I just can't support that. So I'm going to be voting against repealing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. I want to make clear we are not abandoning it. Any commissioner is free at any time to bring through a legal, workable proposal. We are not abandoning this, whatever. I am going to call for the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
No.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes 3-2. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance 02-2022, repealing chapter 8.10, short-term rentals from the Clackamas County Code.
Thank you. Up next is the consent agenda, folks. That should go fairly quickly. I'll be leaving at 11, but hopefully that meeting will finish, and then I can come back and listen to what you folks have to say. We have a lot of cards, and I'm sure you have good topics you want to talk about. Gary, what's next on the consent agenda?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Um, elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, BCC. Approval of resolution authorizing the distribution of $446,166 in grant funds from 2021 House Bill 5006 for reimbursement of lost property tax revenue related to the 2020 wildfires, from the assessor. Approval of resolution authorizing an application process from 2021 House Bill 2247 to waive interest charges on unpaid or late ad valorem property tax payments for 2020-21 property tax year for qualifying businesses, from the assessor. Approval of board order authorizing the cancellation of delinquent personal property and manufactured structure property tax accounts, from the assessor. Approval of a purchase through a cooperative procurement process to replace 60 Panasonic Toughbook laptox docking stations and DVD drives. Total value is $244,775. Funding through budgeted county general funds. Approval to apply for 2022-2025 Stop Violence Against Women Act Formula Competitive Grant. Maximum possible value of grant is $400,000. Funded by the Oregon Department of Justice. No county general funds are involved. It's the district attorney. Administration. Approval of a funding agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Historical Society Museum of the Oregon Territory. Total value, agreement value is $100,000. Funded through budgeted county general funds. Approval of a funding agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Arts Alliance. Total agreement value is $100,000. Funded through budgeted county general funds. Finance. Approval of a resolution transferring appropriations within health, housing, and human services in accordance with local budget law. Transfer value is $33,219,000. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds, the District Attorney's Office appropriated funds, and $1,200,000 in budgeted county general funds. Approval of a resolution acknowledging significant deficiencies in internal control over compliance for fiscal year 2021 and describing corrective action in accordance with ORS 297.466. Health, housing, and human services. Approval to purchase one Category E1 transit ban from Shet K. Northwest Sales, Inc. for the Transportation Reaching People Program. Purchases funded by PGE Drive Change Fund Agreement through the Oregon Clean Fuels Program. For $211,693, no county general funds are involved. Approval of a revenue agreement with Clackamas Workforce Partnership for Prosperity, $10,000 Adult and Dislocated Workforce Services Funds to increase workforce services in Clackamas County. Total value is $149,999. Funded through the Governor's Future Ready Oregon Initiative. No county general funds are involved. Approval of amendment number three to the Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to add COVID and American Rescue Plan Act Relief Funds to current drug and alcohol prevention, education, and programming in Clackamas County. Amendment adds $221,986 for a maximum award amount of $1,548,236. No county general funds are involved. Approval of amendment number one to the 2022 amended and restated County Based Services Revenue Agreement with Health Sheriff of Oregon for Public Health and Behavioral Health Care and Services. This amendment removes language regarding payment reassessments. Total value remains $3,931,863. Funded through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a non-federal subrecipient blue grant agreement with Providence Willamette Falls Medical Foundation for Better Outcomes Through Bridges Program. Total value is $74,663. Funded through the fiscal year '22. Restricted public health fund balance. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a non-federal subrecipient grant agreement with Oregon Health Authority to implement a telehealth pilot program with school-based health center clinics. Total value is $300,000. Funded through the Adolescent and School Health Unity with the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a revenue agreement with Oregon Primary Care Association, Inc. for COVID Treatment Pilot Program. Maximum value of agreement is $250,000. Funded through Oregon Primary Care Association, Inc. No county general funds are involved. Approval of application to Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs for the annual allocation of County Veterans Service Office operational funds in the amount of $278,321. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Homeless Management Information System. Total grant award of $70,862. Funding through a federal housing and urban development grant with a 25% match of supportive housing services funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Continuum of Care Planning Activities. Total award of $113,743. Funded through the Federal Housing and Urban Development Grant with a 25% match of supportive housing services funds. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Approval of an Oregon State Marine Board Boating Facility Grant Intergovernmental Agreement for the Boones Ferry Boat Ramp Dock Replacement. Total value is $50,625. Funded through the Oregon State Marine Board. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a board order authorizing purchases from Overdrive, Inc. for digital library content. Total value is $2,790,000 through 2032. Funded through Library Support Services Budget and reimbursed by Link Library Cities. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Portland University for annual population estimates for the former city of Damascus. Total value is $27,013. Funded through the Damascus Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management. Approval to apply for fiscal year '23, federal fiscal year '22, Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the state of Oregon. Estimated value is $166,327. Funded through the state of Oregon Department of Emergency Management. No county general funds are involved.
Weehaw. Thank you, Shannon, for that. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion for approval.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Shoal has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Now we move on to public communication.
Chair, I apologize, our script is incorrect. There's one more consent agenda for development agency. If we could please do that first.
Oh, it's not on the script.
I know, I apologize.
Okay, good. We will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a development agency for the next item.
Next is a development agency consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of amendment number two to the contract with Harper Hoof for Peterson Regellis, Inc. for the Limwood Avenue Improvement Project. This amendment adds $343,733.92 for a new total contract value of $1,676,077.82. Funding through the Clackamas County Development Agency, North Clackamas Revitalization Area Urban Renewal District. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of the list.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove this item off the consent agenda? Um, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the development agency consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Shoal has moved for approval of this particular consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes. Now we're up for public communication.
If you'd reconvene as the Board of Commissioners, please.
I will reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Chair.
This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregonary statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, will not, we will not be reading those today due to time limitations. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first, and then we will go online. However, we have an elected official, Tammy Stevens, Chair of the Beaver Creek Hamlet, is here to present their quarterly update. I will ask the clerk to open up that Zoom link, and you will have, um, Ms. Stevens, exactly five minutes, which is more than the allotted time. You will have five minutes to present your update. Thank you very much. Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good morning, Commissioner.
Tammy Stevens, Chair of the Hamlet and CPO of Beaver Creek, here with our quarterly community communications. Since our last report, we've had 15 land use applications to share and discuss with our citizens in order to provide the planning department and hearings officer with input for their decisions. Two of these applications were new to us. Replacing a home, however, keeping the original home as an accessory structure. As you can imagine, our board and citizens are concerned with these applications As you can imagine, our board and citizens are concerned with these applications as it allows two structures on lots allowing only one dwelling. On the fourth Wednesday of each month, we have a community meeting and host guest speakers to keep our citizens informed and engaged. Lieutenant Mendoza from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office joins us frequently to keep us posted on local activity and provides advice. Recently, Lieutenant Mendoza introduced us to the sheriff's dashboard where activity by area can be reviewed, quite an interesting and informative tool. Our county staff liaison joins us at our quarterly town hall meetings to keep us posted on county activities and follow up on questions. Over the past six months, we've had Joe Merrick and Kristen Snuffin sharing upcoming road improvements, describing the new signage throughout the county, and to discuss Beaver Creek's very dangerous intersection and challenging roads. We had the Energy Trust of Oregon and a solar contractor, Energy Solutions, educating our citizens on solar resources and options. Houselessness is a growing concern in Beaver Creek as the Newell Creek Canyon is within our boundary. We had Bill Stewart, community prosecutor, provide ways we can look for the county and various services to support our houseless residents. PGE shared their goals and options to carbon neutral in the coming decade and how rural citizens can support these valuable goals. We had speakers who explained the upcoming improvements to I-205 and the amazing process to widen and make Abernathy Bridge able to withstand up to a 9.0 magnitude quake. And this month, we have a presentation on the tolling of I-205. Many of our board members serve on numerous county advisory boards and commissions. We want to thank our vice chair, Bill Merchant, who is a new member of the county's Committee for Community Involvement. Three and a half years ago, our large, the Hamlet of Beaver Creek signs were removed to accommodate a subdivision. On February 5th, after extensive renovations to the signs, they were replaced in the heart of the hamlet. Since then, a new beam donated by a resident and engraved by a volunteer resident has been added to our sign. It says, "Welcome to." Thanks to Board Director Joe Mattio for leading this project. After a two-and-a-half-year pandemic hiatus, the Beaver Creek Bulletin, established in 1998, is being published again. We sincerely thank our local residents and sisters, Melissa and Jen Logan, for their commitment, care, and support of our community. The bulletin is provided both online and in writing throughout our community. Our loved Board Director, Jack Hip, has retired from our board. Jack served since 2017 and will be sincerely missed. Jack is a retired county deputy and established a valuable relationship with our community and the sheriff's office. We thank you, Jack, for his service and community care. Tansy ragwort is an invasive and poisonous weed to livestock, so when our rural community saw a need, they jumped in. There are elderly citizens and citizens who don't reside in Beaver Creek that need help with this weed. The tansy tamers of Beaver Creek, led by Ally Buchanan, joined our citizens to include our Board Secretary Jessica Sernak stepped up to help pull and dispose of this pesky problem. Our Parks Committee has been very active in the Easter hunt with a fundraising basket rattle was held and well attended by the community. We have a flea market and craft fair scheduled for this Saturday, September 10th and September 24th at the Corner Park. We also participated in the Beaver Creek Grade School Celebration of Learning. We do have five requests of the board, but I know I'm going to run over, so I'm going to just email these requests to the board. Because I did want to mention, the last time we spoke, Commissioner Savas asked about the time commitment when serving the planning commission. That question got me thinking. How much time does a hamlet CPO board member spend serving their community and county? So I tracked the time I've spent the past six months, which average 52 hours per month. Every hamlet and CPO volunteer is committed to keeping apprised of county activity and citizen concerns. Clackamas County and our unincorporated community should be proud and appreciative of the county's Public and Government Affairs Department and Citizen Involvement Neighbors. The Hamlet of Beaver Creek serves the Beaver Creek Charis, Echo Glen, and Fisher's Corner area, serving over 10,000 Beaver Creek residents, and we thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Tammy Stevens. Any other communications? As you know, always feel free to call the board or email us with any of your considerations.
Thank you.
We will now start with public testimony. First up, not in any particular order, is it Derek Tu...Derek Tu... Yes, would you please give me your exact pronunciation, your address? And you have three minutes. I'm going to turn the gavel over to Martha Schrader for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Tu, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mr. Tau, actually spelled T-O-U-W.
Thank you.
I live in the Oak Grove neighborhood for about 28 years, and I'm a big supporter of the library. I use it regularly and a lot. And I understand there's a project to...that has been proposed or planned to construct a new library building there in the Oak Grove neighborhood on Concord, and I wish to express my support for that project. I ask that the county make it happen with the funding or whatever is needed for the long-term benefits of the quality of life of the families in that area and the prosperity of that community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. Next, again, in no particular order, Mr. Arthur Moore.
Good morning. I've been giving garden, vegetable garden classes at Oak Lodge Library for 10 years. And we give four...I give four classes a year, one for spring planting, summer planting, fall planting, and a garlic class. And we've got a garlic class on September 22nd, and we'll be giving away hundreds of garlics for people to plant, but you know, they're going to eat a lot of them. And in fact, I was going to bring some to the board, but I thought that might be bribing you to give us a new library, so I didn't do it. But if you want garlic, you can come on the 22nd and Oak Lodge, and we'll be having them out there. We have between one dozen and four dozen people come to each class. And some of the classes, when they get up to four dozen, it's standing room only. And it'd be nice to have a big library that we could fit everybody into. And we give away...on the summer class, we want to teach people how to...when to put in their tomatoes, and we hand out handouts on fertilizers and calendars on what goes in when. Kay Evert, who runs the seed library there, will give us 100 tomato plants or more. And they give them all away, and everybody takes them, goes home and plants. We've got the seed library there, so when we're giving the classes, we tell them what they want, what goes in when, each different season, and they can walk right over after the class and get all the seed we've been talking about out of the library and go plant it. And a lot of the seed comes from...the whole idea of the seed library is get the seeds, grow them, save them, and bring them back. And I've got tomato seed in there I've been saving for 33 years that I've lived in Oak Grove, that I know works in Oak Grove, so we give those away, and lots of other seeds too. So I would like to see the new library come in so we have more space, and thank you all very much.
Well, thank you. I want to ask, can I get some of those tomato seeds?
They're down at the library waiting for you.
All righty, I'll be there. Thank you.
They're called stupice. S-D-U-P-I-C-E.
Okay, thank you.
Been eating them since the first week in July.
All righty. Thank you so much. There's nothing more fun than listening to people that support libraries. I'm going to start calling folks up two at a time because I think it'll help us since we have such a big group. I have Lorraine McClintock and Nancy Eichstedt. Did I say that correctly? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Lorraine McClintock, and I'm the Chair of the Gladstone Task Force for our library. I joined this mission in 2018 and literally met citizens who had been trying to get a library built for years. I went to county public meetings and believed the county's assurance and commitment to the library. We rallied our community to vote for the measure in 2018 to allow the library to be built. I personally assured negative voters that the county said they would do it for us. This task force has met for years and retained 100% of the adult members. We continue to meet even on Zoom, even though 100% of the county employees assigned to this project have turned over. On May 11th, the board voted to table the library to see if costs would go down. I share the desire to be fiscally responsible. However, costs are not going anywhere. I'm here to ask the board to move any amount of ARPA funds you feel necessary to be able to let the library continue. The site is being prepared as we speak. It'll be ready at the end of the month. The only roadblock to getting started is approval from the board. Please help us make the dream of new library come true. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Nancy Eichstedt. I'm on the library task force, and I'm also on the county board for the Clackamas County Libraries. My story goes like this. In 2008, an elderly woman, probably my age, walked into a meeting and said, "Finally, we're going to do something about a new library." We had just voted on the library district. I don't recall her name, but she never got to see the new library. That was 16 years ago. Our current delayed library project situation feels very familiar. We are once again in library purgatory. Now that we're on hold, there's no indication that construction costs will be lower if we wait. In fact, they could continue to rise. Oregon economist Josh Laner says commodity prices are starting to come down, but hand-finished products are still going up. Combine that with labor shortages and wage increases, and there's no guarantee that waiting six, nine, or 12 months to begin construction will lower the final costs. I urge you to prioritize ARPA funds for the new county libraries. These will have lasting economic impact on Gladstone and Oak Grove. Citizens will know and remember who made this happen. These are investments we can actually see that support thousands of Clackamas County citizens and voters. Commissioner Schrader, we go way back. You've been a lifelong supporter of libraries as an educator. Commissioner Savas, I've seen you at almost all the task force meetings. Commissioner Fisher, you already know the benefits libraries provide to kids and families. Commissioner Shoal, your Sandy library is one of the best in the county. Shouldn't we all have a great library like Sandy's? And Chair Smith, sorry you had to leave. You're a published author, and you've also been very supportive of libraries in the past, so I'm asking you to move this project out of library purgatory. This is a leap of faith. This board will likely never again have access to a substantial windfall like the ARPA funds. What you do with it matters. You could dump it all into a courthouse that would serve a handful of people, or you could build these libraries that people will use every single day. 16 years. This shouldn't be so hard. Please reconsider the hold on the county library projects, and don't turn me into that elderly woman.
Oh, thank you for that. So I'm not going to tell you how old I am today, but I'm in that category too. Let me tell you. Yeah. Okay. All right, next.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. So thank you both for...actually, everyone here today for coming up. I just wanted to just clarify one thing, is that, yes, we did wait or pause up to a year. And the other project, the Oak Lodge Library, that is moving forward with the engineering so that ideally, that when that engineering is complete, we can move forward on both libraries at the same time. So that should be right around that period of time. I'm estimating about nine months ideally, maybe 10 or so, so that both projects go at the same time and possibly with the same contractor for perhaps a lower cost perhaps than doing the project separately. They'll be able to save money on mobilization and other aspects, so I remain committed to both projects and getting them launched at the same time, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Yay, okay. Okay, Grover, you can clap. Yeah. Okay, let's have Leslie Shirck, did I say that correctly? And Kay Everts come up. If I'm mispronouncing your name, please correct me, okay?
Okay. I can go first. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. I am Leslie Shirck, an Oak Grove resident, a founding member of the Friends of the Oak Lodge Public Library, former member of the Library Board of Trustees, and Eldac alternate. I'm a member of the Gladstone Library Task Force and Seed Garden Volunteer. For residents of Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge, and Gladstone, the road to a new library is very long, rocky, frustrating, and demoralizing. Many residents and library advocates have lost faith in the system and any hopes that they ever had of seeing a new library in their lifetime, and we just had an example. But in spite of over a decade of setbacks and dashed hopes, you should know that a vibrant, energetic volunteer community has emerged in support of the library. In 2016, the Friends of the Oak Lodge Public Library was formed as a 501(c)(3). An important goal of the group was to raise funds for the new library. With the help of many new volunteers, the Old Friends Bookstore was revamped and revitalized, which increased sales and won praise from patrons. Books were also regularly sold to Powell's and Thrift Books, a popular online bookseller. Garden tours, book, and plant sales at the Trolley Trail Fest were other fundraising activities undertaken. In 2017, Seeds for Sharing, a seed library, became a reality at Oak Lodge Library and expanded to the Gladstone Library in 2019. You will hear Kay tell you a lot about the accomplishments of that. Seeds for native plants will be added to the seed library this fall. Native shrubs will be available at plant sales and giveaways in the spring. A native plant seed garden is envisioned. Native plant classes will be added to the current schedule of gardening classes that Arthur told you about. Volunteer efforts to bring community awareness, appreciation, and conservation of the native white oak, the namesake tree of Oak Grove, and a priceless environmental treasure are also planned for the future. It's hard for the community to be optimistic and engaged when longed-for, much-needed, promised, and approved community projects are derailed or put on hold. Promises were made and reiterated. The funding will be there. Please make it so. As a county commissioner, I would think there is no funding decision you make with greater beneficial impact than the decision to fund a library, a long-term legacy of your term of public service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kay Everts, and I'm a resident of Oak Grove. In 2017, I helped start a volunteer-run Seeds for Sharing seed library at the Oak Lodge Public Library, and as Leslie mentioned, we expanded to the Gladstone Library in 2019. We offer over 1,000 varieties of vegetables, herbs, and flowers to anyone free who has a Clackamas County library card. Since we've started, we have distributed more than 25,000 packets of seeds to our community, helping people grow nutritious food. We are helping resiliency and dealing with food insecurity in the county. We function as a seed bank also, especially in hard times. During the pandemic, more and more people started gardening because there was a worry about, where will I get my food? And this happened across the country. So what happened is when people tried to place their seed orders with seed companies, the seed companies ran out, and/or the seed companies had one or two months' delay in getting new seeds, too late for your planting season. Meanwhile, at the seed library, we had a turnaround time of just a day or two to our folks. So we helped feed our community during tough times. At the New Urban High School, Arthur Moore and I lead a team of volunteers who grow seeds and food for the community. We use seeds from the library. Every time we grow the seeds and replant them, we're adding adaptability and resiliency to the seeds. We know these seeds will grow in our community. And we grow so many seeds that we restock not only our two seed libraries in Oak Lodge and Gladstone, but we have plenty to give to Sandy and to the Letting Library as well. and to the Letting Library as well. The Oak Lodge Public Library building, where we hold our gardening classes, is very rundown. It does not draw people in. And we really need a better facility. We have to set up chairs in the children's area to be able to have a class because we do not have an adequate classroom. Please help fully fund a new library for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm finding this very uplifting. There's nothing nicer and kinder than library people, I have to tell you. Next, let's have Lisa Bentley and Elizabeth Gobel. Okay. Wait a moment.
Forgive me for being so slow.
No worries. Thank you, Grover.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Gobel. You may recognize my name because I have contacted all of you before about the community center proposed at the Concord property. But today, I'm here for the library. My husband and I moved from Portland in 1989, and I was eight months pregnant at the time. I could barely fit behind the steering wheel of a car. But one of the first things I did was to get my Clackamas County library card at the Oak Lodge branch. And I often go twice a week and have for years. Libraries are a primary resource for so much, and it's been listed. I'm not going to repeat all the wonderful things libraries can do because it would take too long. But our corner of unincorporated Clackamas County in Oak Lodge has been a bit neglected. As has been stated, our Oak Lodge library is small and rundown. And I followed the work of the Concord Task Force because of the library. I followed them from the beginning of their formation, and they have come up with a wonderful, forward-looking plan that will serve the residents for decades. And we need this new library. We deserve it. We're willing to support it, as you can see. And so I ask that the Board of Commissioners wholeheartedly support this new library plan.
I'm assuming that we need to leave the building, Gary, is that correct? Let's find out.
Wait or continue?
Let's wait, let's wait for a moment, and everybody just remain calm. We don't.
It may just be a power safety alert. They might shut off the power.
Okay. So we will just wait and see. Nobody panic. We're all good. And we have a great administrator who does great things under stress. So he's going to manage whatever we need. Shannon, is there anything you can add to Commissioner Scholl? Do we, we're waiting and seeing?
Thank you, Gary has gone to check on it, Administrator Schmidt. But I've heard from our facility folks that there's a wildfire alert.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Schmidt, so that was, we think, a wildfire?
It's a false alarm, so until further notice, please keep going.
All right, let's continue.
Let's find the funds. We have some of them. Let's find the funds that are needed to build and fully support this wonderful new library plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Bentley, and I'm from Oak Lodge. I want to thank you for your continuing interest and commitment to providing the finest services possible to the residents of Clackamas County. Thank you. With so many asking for so much, it is not an easy task, but your ongoing effort makes me proud of being a resident of Clackamas County. Today, I asked for a recommitment, a recommitment to the earlier decision to build the Oak Lodge Library by earmarking now funding for the library, or at least a portion of the funding. The residents of Greater Oak Lodge organized again in 2016 and petitioned for a new library. Six years later, our library still cannot offer programs and services equal to other Clackamas County libraries. And because of woefully inadequate library space, you know this. You've heard it too much. Our children and youth are losing out, and low-income residents desperately need access to all the services an adequate public library could provide. Libraries and literacy form the bedrock of successful democratic institutions. You know that. If we do not provide the tools for becoming good citizens, our county and our country will not continue to prosper. From the first days of our republic, one of the first community spaces added to a new town was the library. When the British burned the nation's capital in 1812, Thomas Jefferson stepped up and immediately made available his private library to rebuild the Library of Congress book collection that was destroyed in the fire. During the U.S. Civil War, Union troops found excellent libraries in the Confederacy, especially along the South Atlantic coast. However, literacy was criminalized for Black people, and thus, the Confederacy hoped to maintain control over their version of democracy. In late 1861, northern citizens began teaching literacy to formerly enslaved freedmen, women, and children as they prepared to participate in our republican form of government. Andrew Carnegie can further the tradition of citizen access to prelibraries. In the last century, Clackamas County Commissioners led the way for our residents to approve funds for an outstanding library system. Two libraries remain today to be constructed, one in Gladstone and the other in Oak Lodge. Oak Lodge residents asked today, now, for the BCC to commit funds to the Oak Lodge Library and to a timetable for its construction, which I think I've just heard. We believe our Board of County Commissioners will ensure the design and construction of a fine library in the tradition of Clackamas County. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Okay, next we have Mr. Elvis Clark and Marcy Slater.
Somebody's got to hold the chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, how embarrassing.
Little Vice Chair Martha Schrader and Commissioners. Elvis Clark of City, Milwaukee. I wanted to commend the board for getting behind Commissioner Savis and also Commissioner Scholl's also working on the subject of tolling and the ODOT's rather unfair structuring of that committee that would determine what the tolls are and the governance structure there. His letter of September 7th is very commendable. And I was going to talk about more of the funding, which seems like we were kind of, Clackamas was taken advantage of when the governor and our Metro President with the Transportation Commissioner of PBOT agreed to throw $700 million towards the capping of I-5 in North Portland. That wasn't really envisioned initially, and so it's driven, eaten up a lot of the extra money that ODOT has come into in the last four years since House Bill 217 was enacted. But I'm not going to say much more about that. I would like to talk about a little bit of the libraries. Milwaukee's been blessed with this new library. It's the Letting Library reconstructed. And one of the nice things about the property tax limits is that it allows a community to vote in favor of a library reconstruction bond. And I, that was very good that the community did come together and pass that bond. I think it was 2016, and now we have the benefits of a very nice, well-constructed building that sits in within a park of Scott Park. And so it's, communities just love parks, and I've come to that conclusion over, yeah, following politics for like 20 years or more. You just don't fight libraries. Anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. It's nice to see you.
Oh, thank you.
Marcy.
Hi, I'm Marcy Slater. I'm here to support, in support of the Hoodland Fire District's bid for the Dormant Center property in Hoodland, across from the school, on Salmon River Road. As you know, this property was, is, was and is still in an MOU that was between the county and the Hoodland Women's Club to develop a park there. Since the election, we know now there will be no park there. But we are, as a committee, very devoted to the idea of making sure that land stays within the community for the good of the general public. So with that in mind, the ad hoc committee of the Women's Club, also known as the Park District Petition Committee, continues to support our community. In any plan that includes the preservation of the Dormant Center site for the better good of all our neighbors, will be supported by us in any way we can. Therefore, the committee wants to formally and publicly support a proposed plan to transfer the MOU between Hoodland Women's Club and Clackamas County to Hoodland Fire District and Clackamas County. The current MOU expires on December 31st, 2022. The committee would advise an extension of the expiry date to December 31st, 2023. The extended date will give the Hoodland Fire District Board the time it needs to formalize its plan for its use of the parcels in question, secure community support for the plan, and hire professional grant writer to seek out funds for such a project. Obviously, in our community, it seems that it is not in the mood for additional taxes at this time. The deeding of the parcels to Hoodland Fire District seems to fit with the county's idea of using this land for the good of the Hoodland communities as well, and also meets the standard of deeding this land to a government entity without charge. We respectfully submit this. Marcy Slater, Chair. Regina Lithgow, Community Committee Member. Bonnie Hayman, Committee Treasurer. All of us were the chief petitioners. Thank you.
I want to thank you for your work on that park. I've known the Hoodland Women's Association for years. You welcomed me when I was a new commissioner. And we'll be delighted, I'm sure I can speak for my colleagues, to continue to work with you, Marcy, on this issue. And appreciate your coming, both of you, today.
Thank you.
All right. Shirley Duer. And let's have Nora Gambaz. Did I say that correctly? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're here for the, to explain why the Fire Department is looking at the Dormant Center to be, for our, for the use of the Fire District. And I'll let Nora go first.
Thank you very much for hearing us. We need a new fire station, really bad. Our fire station is very old, and it failed the seismographic test that we had done on it. And so we would really appreciate being able to acquire that property, to be able to put a fire station on it, but not just a fire station. We also have a, need a police presence on the mountain. We don't have one. And if we can acquire that property, it would be really nice for us to be able to have quarters for the Sheriff's Department, to be able to be there for us. Also, our present fire station does not allow for overnight sleeping arrangements. And we now, with our last initiative, have 24/7 coverage. And so right now, our young people are sleeping in a trailer on the back of the building, and it doesn't have a restroom. So in winter, they have to come out of the trailer and into the building to go to the restroom. And we have lady firefighters too. So it's a bit of a problem for us, and we really do need to get a new fire station, and we need the property. But we don't just want to use this property for a fire department. We're going to use this property too as a community center as well. We're going to, we're hoping to put plans forward to have the community garden stay, have a park arrangement there, and be able to have community meetings. Right now, we have to use the church or wherever place we can go, but it would really be nice to have incorporated there. Our fire station cannot accommodate any community meetings because we can't secure the station to have community meetings. So that's part of why we want to have it. Our community is growing. We have an awful lot of an impact of more people coming up there and more needs for our fire services, and we need to expand our fire department. Thank you very much for your time. Oh, and one quick thing. I am the president, the CPO of Hoodland. And I really would like to talk to you, Mr. Marcy.
All right. Thank you for coming. All right, ladies.
And we, on the property, have nowhere to put a modular home anywhere. We have no, we need places to park the vehicles. So a modular home, we've looked into practically every idea that there is to be able to house our 24-hour shift people. It's getting very tight. We have no place to train our staff, volunteers, or anything because the, we have put on, like Nora said, there's an old trailer that's been there for 16 years that the staff sleeps in at night. But that took the room for any other training room, a training that we could do even outside. We use the school parking lot for training. So would really appreciate that MOU. I thank you very much. And Martha, the bus is still running.
It sounds like you have a fan club up on the mountain there, my friend. All right, let's have Mr. John Lee and my friend, Mr. Ector, Paul Ector.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Lee from Clark County. I attended all but one of the Six Value Pricing I attended all but one of the Six Value Pricing PAC meetings on tolling. That was a sham because the ODOT staff and their paid consultants made the decisions rather than the committee members. Tolling is a hugely inefficient way to collect money for transportation. In Seattle on I 405, 43 cents out of every tolling dollar collected goes to the cost of collection. Furthermore, the Washington State tolling program has had to be bailed out with other taxpayer money for the last three years. The program currently isn't making enough money to cover their costs. The SR 99 Tunnel in Seattle will be in the red and underwater for the next 30 years due to a recent report. Once ODOT's tolling program is implemented on all Portland-area freeways, 130,000 vehicles will divert onto side roads and into neighborhoods, as you are very well aware. ODOT's congestion pricing program will create a nightmare of safety and congestion on side roads. It won't eliminate traffic congestion. It will simply change where it occurs as people seek to avoid paying the tolls. Where's the equity? Once again, ODOT is targeting poor and lower-income neighborhoods with the brunt of traffic diversion. Imagine every single vehicle crossing the I five Interstate Bridge on an average day, now diverting onto side roads and into neighborhoods. That's the nightmare ODOT's going to create with their tolling program. The money ODOT demands is not needed. Oregon's HB 2017 raised 5.3 billion for statewide transportation. None of the projects on the list required tolls to pay for them. The $1.2 trillion federal package will send at least an additional $6 billion to Oregon for transportation. Simply put, the money's not needed. But for the ODOT bureaucrats, they can never get enough of the people's money. The I 205 project will eliminate 12 hours of traffic congestion. That's not because of the tolling, but because the new lane adds 50% more vehicle capacity to I 205. ODOT refuses to tell us how much of the reduction in congestion is due to the new lanes versus the tolls, but common sense indicates the 50% increase in vehicle capacity is the overwhelming reason. ODOT supports equity with reduced or free travel for minority and low-income populations. Yet every free or reduced-rate traveler will add congestion and therefore increase toll congestion prices for others, harming hard-working families who don't qualify for the program. In the end, none of this makes sense. Everyone is harmed by the traffic diversion and the high-priced tolls that will raise very little money. Please support Commissioner Savis's letter to RTAC, and I want to encourage all citizens to support IP 41 that will require a vote before tolls can be put on any Oregon highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ector, welcome.
Again, thank you, County Commission, and everyone here. I've been honored over a lot of years to participate with county projects. I was on the Transportation Committee that created the current TSP. I've been on the Community Action Board, the Veterans Advisory Council, and the Historic Review Board. One of the things you're looking for is somebody with some common sense, business sense, and cares. The reason why I'm here is I care about Clackamas County's economic future. And the future that would be put under, just like a knife through it with this tolling, proposed tolling of the I 205 corridor, it's going to suppress movement, suppress cars and people from being, moving on it. It could be 200-plus dollars a month per person. Now, who are these people that are using it? Well, they're people just like you and I. They're working people that have to get to a job in the AM and PM, may have to be taking kids to daycare or wherever it is, schools. But they're, they could have incomes of $150,000 as a family. And that's not uncommon. College-educated, working people with good traits. But the, 60% of the people that will be in the corridor will be paycheck-to-paycheck, no matter what their income is. And so when you start taking these people with paycheck-to-paycheck world and you throw on 200-plus dollars a month in an added charge over high cost of gas, high cost of housing, just inflation and putting food on the table, what are you going to do? You're going to cause significantly greater diversion than anyone has ever thought about, and much as what John just talked about. This is going to put probably 40,000 cars a day onto side streets, roads, highways, and bridges. Just think of a Lamont Falls Drive and all the people trying to get onto it, or 43 or Highway 99E, and the Oregon City Westland Bridge. And those people pouring across that will stop movement on Highway 99E McLaughlin. It will kill the business community. This will have an economic impact of a minimum of a 10% reduction in economic activity and truly kill many brick-and-mortar businesses and reduce their property value. This is such a significant thing. I'm recommending to the County Commission that you go to this ODOT, OTC meeting on September 16th, or 13th, and formally tell them, look them in the eye, and tell the OTC, Oregon Transportation Commission, that this is a killer to Clackamas County, its businesses, and its people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here today. We do have our colleagues here. Commissioner Schell is working on impact on this issue, and Commissioner Savis is our transportation guru, so, and I know that Commissioner Fisher, you've been very interested in the transportation issues as well. So we are on it, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I've got two more cards. Let's move us along. I've been a little bit liberal with time today because you've all come out and wanted to make sure you all got a chance to speak. Ellen Russell is up next, and Pat Reinert. I hope, again, I pronounced your names correctly. Thank you. Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Ellen Russell, and I'm here to tell you why libraries are important. I currently live in Beaverton, but I grew up in Jennings Lodge, and my mom still lives in the house where I grew up. I served on the Beaverton Library Advisory Board for six years, two as chair, but because I spent my formative years in the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries, it's a constant struggle to remember that Washington County's lending period is a measly 21 days, 21, instead of the more reasonable 28 days allowed in Clackamas. Libraries are important. I grew up with Storytime, then moved to young adult novels, then using the county library's manual typewriter to fill out college applications. I left for four years, then came back to that same typewriter to fill out a visa application to bring my college sweetheart here from England. Libraries are important. We just celebrated our 18th wedding anniversary. Our kiddo arrived 12 years later, and we began the cycle again. We dragged ourselves to PJ's Storytime, where kids and frazzled parents were encouraged to show up in pajamas. We're continuing the cycle, dragging my mom to the Oak Lodge Gardening Group, held the Fourth Thursday of each month in the county library, and we will be there on the 22nd for the garlic meeting. Libraries are important, and they need to grow along with us. I challenge anyone here to produce a piece of technology they currently use that was made over 25 years ago. The Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries were built when the technology we take for granted today was mere science fiction. The 50,000 patrons served by these two libraries are served well, but we can do better. Libraries are essential, so I urge the esteemed Commissioners to approve funding for the construction of the one library, two branches, for the combined Clackamas County, Oak Lodge, and Gladstone Library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. You know, my, thank you for coming from Beaverton, by the way, and my, my daughter also married a Brit, and they live in Bristol, England, and I just got back from seeing my grandchildren, so.
And our thoughts and prayers are with the Queen who passed.
I know, she passed away today, everyone, just so that you know. Yes, Queen Elizabeth, it's come over the news, 70 years of, I don't mean to get, Gary, I know you're looking at me because I go off task all the time, I'm just, I ramble, but I was going to mention that, the Queen, and what a wonderful, what a wonderful monarch. She was truly, truly a queen. Don't make me cry, okay? But I have to tell you with my grandchildren, sometimes with their accents, I'm like, what did you say? But they're adorable. Well, thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt. Please.
Okay, my name is Pat Reinert. I'm from Jennings Lodge. I'm here in support of the library. There's evidently very much a need for the library. I understand that the McLaughlin Library is substandard. I mean in space, not in welcoming personnel or help at all when you do go to the library. So that's number one. Number two, I think there's support for the library has, has been very evident here today. Not only the people spoke today about what they do with the library and how they use the library, but I understand that the two libraries that are in Oak Lodge and in Gladstone have already collected millions of dollars in support of these libraries. So there is support financially as well as community interest. And number three, I think that the library would be an enrichment, not only for the community, but for you people and the county.
Thank you for coming today. This has been wonderful testimony. I believe now, Shannon, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Yes, thank you so much. I do have a list.
Wow, we're going to be here a while, folks.
Yep, I will call them in the order they received. If you did not register but would like to provide testimony, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. First up is Deborah Bukowski. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your area of residence.
Deborah Bukowski. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County and use the Oak Lodge Library, but I'm also on the Gladstone Library Task Force. Our previous commentators have made excellent arguments for why we need to move forward with the two libraries. I will just ask you, I won't repeat all that, but I will just ask you to endorse officially Paul Savis's comment that once the contractors have finished with their assessment, that we move, that we move forward with the two libraries. We'd like to see a formal commitment to do that. It's very frustrating that we keep hearing, you support libraries, but then nothing ever really happens. As other people have said, this has been going on for, in my case, decades. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Who's next, Shannon?
Next up is Suzanne Wolf. Suzanne, please unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Wolf, and I live in Oak Grove. I've lived here for about eight years now. And in 2018, I started my service with the Historic Downtown Oak Grove Organization, which is a neighborhood nonprofit. And currently, I serve as president of this organization. I would like to speak to the funding of the Oak Lodge Library. We, the, our organization currently has 44 members, and 18 of those members are eligible to vote. And one of our missions is the cultivation of community spirit, and libraries are one of the cornerstones of community spirit. HDOG is an example of people coming together, acting on a common goal, and making socially enriching events and projects become a reality. Perfect examples that HDOG has organized with the help of volunteers and also county departments are the Trolley Trail Fest, Paul Savis, thank you, and also Sonia Fisher, thank you for attending. Knock Retreat, a Halloween event, bike racks, and a repair station, the first on the trolley trail, trolley trail. The enlivening and beautification of downtown Oak Grove, and also, at this time, the advocacy for a park in the downtown area. What HDOG does is parallel to what the library does. Both are threads in weaving a joyful community fabric. With that said, we are in solid support for the Oak Lodge Library being built, and that we see its benefits rippling throughout the whole Oak Lodge community. Therefore, we urge the BCC to prioritize funding for this project by allocating funds from the one-time county, county ARPA funds currently available, along with the county general fund. We want the BCC to know that we are enthusiastic about getting a new library. Thank you for your consideration of our interest to further enrich our community.
Thank you. Shannon, who's up next?
Seeing no more hands, that is the end of my list, Chair.
All righty. Thank you all for coming today. Mr. Savis, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, well, there's certainly a concerted outpouring of people here today representing the Oak Lodge Library and all the other comments as well on other topics, but I just want to acknowledge it was great to see some of you again because we would meet every Friday morning at the Oak Lodge Fire Station prior, well prior to the settlement with Gladstone and then thereafter the settlement with Gladstone. So there's been hours and hours and hours of work and dedication, and this commission and staff have committed to building this library in the past. It would be an absolute shame, a travesty, to turn back on that commitment. Certainly, we got bogged down with the libraries because of the inflation as a result of COVID and the supply chain issues and everything else. And that's precisely what the ARPA dollars are for, really, is to, to put together or, you know, get those projects lifted up with those dollars. And when we made that initiative, that initial move to wait the one year and then tie the Oak Lodge Library design and engineering into that, it was my understanding that we were going to do that to all of our projects, the courthouse included, for the same reasons. But I was a little bit surprised that we did move forward with the courthouse contrary to, for, for reasons contrary to what we did here. So I, I think it would be frankly appropriate at some point here in the near future to make that commitment, to making sure the ARPA dollars fill the gap to build both these libraries. We've made the legal agreement, settlement agreement with Gladstone included really one library, two locations, so the Oak Lodge Library is not separate from that settlement agreement in principle and in spirit. So at some point, you know, it's favor my colleagues to move forward faster with a commitment than, than we perhaps anticipate, then fine, but I think we should, I think we, at some point in their future, we should do that.
I think we will have that discussion for sure, Commissioner Savis. Colleagues, anymore, I don't see any lights on anymore. Does anyone else want to make a comment? Yes, Mr. Schell.
Are you ready for Commissioner comments, or you want to just come?
Well, I'm going to move ahead with Gary.
Yeah, okay.
If no one else is registered to speak.
If no one else is registered to speak, and I'm going to save my comments to Commissioner Communication, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I got the gavel, yay for me. And Gary, what's up next?
Next is County Administrator update, but I will pass on my report because of the time. So next would be Commissioner Communications, Chair.
All righty, I will go last. I would like to see Sonia.
Okay.
What do you got?
Thank you, Vice Chair Schrader. So thank you, everyone, for being here and sharing your thoughts, really, really important issues. And this is really where it all happens, is with community engagement, community involvement, and I just give my heartfelt thank you very, very much. And I'm not sure when our date is for the libraries, but I know it's later this month that we're going to be discussing it formally on our agenda, Gary, is that right?
Steph, we'll come back to you before the end of this month on ARPA dollars and how you could spend them, yes.
And just the whole, the library issue. And I, for one, I just want to say, I, we did not pause on the courthouse because it became abundantly clear that costs were not going to be going down. In fact, there were risks that they were going to be going up. And I only reluctantly supported a pause for these, this library, because Mayor Stimple had thought it would be a good idea, and I really trust her advice. And I was assured that we were moving forward with all of the planning for the Oak Lodge replacement, and that was going to need to happen anyway. So in my mind, we were not pausing on the design of Oak Lodge, and we were just pausing on Gladstone. So I don't support pausing anymore. I want to see us move forward faster, as fast as possible. It's also part of our economic recovery to move forward with these libraries. So those are just my comments on that issue. Now, I have another very important issue I need to bring to my Commissioner's attention. And I talked with Chair Smith before the meeting, and not remembering, well, we're just back from recess, and not remembering that Chair Smith and Commissioner Schrader are out next week, I wanted to give Chair Smith a heads up that I was wanting to bring the issue of the Regional Arts and Culture Council funding to issues, and she said, oh, but we're gone, we're hoping we're going to be gone because if there are fire issues, Commissioner Schrader and Chair Smith will not be going anywhere. But we're hoping that there are not any fire issues and they're able to lobby for us in DC. But we had, the Regional Arts and Culture Council came before the commission and gave a briefing. We had a wonderful discussion. There was talk about finding other resources, or finding resources within our, like, potentially lottery dollars to help fund their investment, because the investment that we make in the Regional Arts and Culture Council comes back to us really triple-fold to our arts and culture organizations. And these are lots of different projects that are funded through the Regional Arts and Culture Council. So their funding timeframe, which I've just become aware of, closes on September 28th, and our policy session isn't scheduled until October. So I think our administrator would very much appreciate, I don't know what you need, Gary, just a head nod that it's our interest in finding ways for you, to give you the go-ahead, to have the wherewithal from our blessing. I know Chair Smith said, go talk to Gary, tell him to do it. She's not here to verify that, but that was what she said. I'm hoping we can get other commissioners just to give Gary the instructions to go ahead and find that funding, so we don't lose out from that investment. Because what they leverage with our investment is incredible. So in 2019, with an $80,000 investment, they leveraged an additional $217,000 for investment back to Clackamas County artists and arts organizations of $317,000. In 2020, it was $80,000 that we invested, and it resulted in $204,000 additional dollars for a total of $304,000. And so these dollars matter. One of the key components of the Regional Arts and Culture Council moving forward, they are not just operating in the metro boundary, it is all of Clackamas County. These funds will benefit Estacada, Malala, Cambi, areas outside of the urban growth boundary. That's a really important change, and I don't want to see us lose out on this opportunity because we aren't able to fit it in before October. So, Gary, I don't know procedurally what I need to do. I'm sorry for this emergency. We were on recess. I just was alerted to this today, actually.
So we're coming to you on September 20th, not October, to discuss how to use the lottery dollars. We're finally ready to loop back to you on that. That is where I propose these funds come from. If you don't feel you can wait till then, Commissioners, I need three of you to tell me right now to direct me to fund out of lottery dollars the RAC contribution.
I actually, I'll be, I have always been a supporter of RAC and have funded them in the past. I do feel awkward not having Chair Smith here, however. I think that she will get there. I am certainly, again, from my personal viewpoint, would be willing to go there, but I would like to make sure that we are all part of that conversation. So if you will-
We don't have time to wait, because their funding window closes September 28th. And with you being gone next week, we have to direct-
Perhaps, Gary, could we have, can we have a conversation about that this week?
I'm sorry, I just said September 20th would be the discussion with you, which is ahead of their deadline of September 28th.
But I think their funding closes September 28th. That's what this memo that I have says.
Yeah, and I think Gary, what Gary's saying is that we meet eight days before September 28th.
So we should be okay, I think.
I know, but they won't be able to get the grants. Their cycle is right now, and it closes September 28th. So for them to only have eight days to receive applicants for the funding isn't, that's how I read this memo. I got a memo from Kimberly. She's not here to talk about it.
Well, colleagues, I'm not going to make this decision alone. What is your, Commissioner Fisher wants to move this forward. Would you, we have agreement, unanimous agreement right now that this is something we'd like to do?
I prefer, I prefer to look at this in more detail before I decide on it.
I'd like to understand it better. I'm not sure I understand of the deadline that Gary's laying out, that it does or doesn't fit, so I don't like to make spur-of-the-moment decisions without any material in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't either, quite frankly, but-
I know. So respectfully, Commissioner, let's, let's hold on this. I do think that RAC funding will happen, and if you would bear with the majority of us right now, let's, let's have that conversation on the 20th. I will tell you now today, of course, I support RAC funding. So I don't think that's it, but I think we have to stick to our process. So thank you for that.
Okay, so if what this memo from Kimberly is true, it says the fall grant-making window for RAC has opened and will close on September 28th. If that means that Clackamas County will miss out if we wait until the 20th, what is our alternative?
Well, I think that what I would ask you to do, Commissioner, could you verify that? Could you call RAC? Could you get some folks and verify that and let them know the situation we're in? I love you to death, but you are such a lawyer sometimes.
No, I just, I'm looking at, I'm getting through my emails from, we're on recess, and this, yeah, so-
So I can help. I remember when the RAC representatives came to speak to you, they had mentioned their, Commissioner Fisher is correct, their grant proposals, the money they give out is happening now and ends the end of September. And they claimed that without Clackamas County contributing to the RAC, they would not give any funds to Clackamas County organizations. Right or wrong, that's what they claimed. Therefore, they're using our dollars, should you give it to them, to leverage further grant opportunities for Clackamas County arts organizations. So they're claiming if you do not give a contribution, they will not fund Clackamas County organizations. That's my memory. I don't want to put words in their mouth. That's my memory. So that is the timeliness of why they're asking for a contribution from us ASAP.
ASAP, okay.
So it sounds like it's really a redistribution of the lottery dollars through us to them for that purpose. So it's a redistribution, essentially, right?
Yes.
So we could choose to distribute it directly to them as well?
Right.
You could redistribute it directly to arts organizations in Clackamas County instead of going through RAC. You could do that.
Well, they're not accepting, they're not receiving the proposals from Clackamas County artists that are saying, I am applying for this money. That is happening now. And our investment through, the three jurisdictions, Washington County, Monloma County, Clackamas County, is the basis of which they leverage the additional dollars. So Clackamas County sitting this out would be a detriment to our arts organizations, which is vital for our economic recovery out of COVID.
I would agree, but I still feel as if we need to make sure we have a complete commission here, quite honestly. If we miss a RAC deadline, I would be more than willing to consider, and I think after this, we're going to end the discussion. Thank you very much. I would very much like to consider giving it to our then-local arts organization and work with them to continue to leverage, but in one way or another, we will fund the arts. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief. Good morning, well, good afternoon, Clackamas County, and thank you to everyone who came in here to testify today. This has been very informative and very helpful. On suicide prevention, this month is Suicide Prevention Month, and I would like to call everyone's attention to a couple of things. There's a lot of information on the National Alliance on Mental Illness website. Also here in Clackamas County, we have the County Crisis Hotline, 655-8585, and our Mental Health Clinic on 82nd Avenue. No one in Clackamas County need feel alone or without help when it comes to mental issues, and the issue of suicide, suicide prevention is everybody's job. On law and order, I'd like to call your attention to a new report on the Clackamas County Sheriff's website. That's the 2021 year in review. Take a look at that. I'm very proud of the job that the Sheriff Department is doing in Clackamas County. I'm sure you are too. On fire safety, I'd like to thank everybody for, in the county, for their awareness on fire safety this summer. We've made it this far without any major fires, but we do have an event coming tomorrow afternoon lasting through Saturday night, high winds, dry air, and the potential for power shutdowns in some of the parts of the county. So bear with us this weekend, continue to be safe until those first fall rains come. Also, the Vietnam Memorial has received a go-ahead in Salem, but they need some funding to get that construction completed. See the Vietnam War Memorial Fund website, and if you can, make a donation. You heard from John Lee and Paul Edgar this morning on tolling. This is a very big issue for not just the people in Clackamas County, but for everyone in the West Coast that comes through our region. This is huge. I appreciate John Lee and Paul Edgar's testimony today. I encourage everyone in this county to contact your state representative and your state senator and let them know how you feel about this. I believe it's not too late to stop it, but we are against a big bureaucracy in Salem that wants this tolling to happen, and it's going to take everyone to push it back. I appreciate the people who came in and talked to us about short-term rentals, and I will contact the Hoodland CPO, and I'm going to meet with them as soon as I can and see if we can't get a rough draft and some ideas going. On the library issues, I appreciate the testimony today, and I look forward to working with the board and the staff to see how we can fund these things and get these projects built. I know you've heard that before, but I just want it done. And also, on the Hoodland Fire District testimony this morning, we have a letter from the fire chief up there, Scott Klein, on this issue, which I'll share with the other commissioners here today. And this idea for a new fire station, a community meeting area, raised bed gardens, and a large grove of trees, and an area for the sheriff to have a presence up there in the Welch's area, I support that. It's very much needed. And thank you all for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Did I skip you, Commissioner Savis? Did you have anything else to add?
Oh, no, you haven't skipped. Well, unless you want to skip me.
No, no.
Yeah, I just want to give you an all, an update, just to build, I was going to, I'll change the order, just to build on Commissioner Scholl's comments. I was invited about a month and a half ago to speak before the Twelton Chamber, which I did this morning, and we had about a hundred and some odd people there at the chamber, and the topic was tolling. It was joined by my good friend, Commissioner Rogers from Washington County. It was a great turnout. We had some folks there from ODOT. We had a couple legislators, mayors, and so forth. So it was, it was a really enlightening discussion. It is very clear, frankly, that a lot of people really don't, the message, message is not getting out. I don't think, people have a lot of misunderstandings, so fortunately this morning, we were able to clarify a number of some of those misunderstandings. But I think that there was a, evidently, evidently, a lot of people who voted perhaps for 3055, they didn't really know what was in it, HB 3055. And I think there's a realization now what was in HB 3055. The other thing that was revealed today, there were a couple, two people there, the chief petitioners for, I think, IP 41, I believe. I believe, if I understood what they, from talking to them this morning, I met them this morning for the first time, but they did have an opportunity at the mic to announce that, you know, they expect within very short order here to have a petition to circulate for, for the ballot of November of 2024, two years from now. So that'll require a vote of any county, the citizens of any county within 15 miles of a told, of a told facility. So that's on the horizon, it looks like. So just want to give you that update. The other thing I really want to talk about is September is my first business meeting here in September, and I want to remind my colleagues of my efforts I made a year ago, my plea to you all and to staff for trying to get a, another shelter underway in short order in advance of the inclement weather around the corner. A year has gone by, and I don't feel, really don't feel that we're really any closer to meeting a shelter need in the upcoming winter by any stretch of our imagination. I think that's a shame. We have the resources to do it, the financial resources to do it, and I would really think that perhaps the five of us could really reconsider assigning Commissioner Schrader and myself to once again be the key two people to push that effort along like we did the Veterans Village. We did that with, again, a grateful to staff, grateful to the administrator, but I really think that extra push and problem-solving can get this moving. But anyhow, I know there's a lot of efforts underway, I know the staff's working on it, but again, I don't see anything that's going to happen or be stood up between now and the winter, and that concerns me. Anyhow, that concludes my comments for today, Chair.
Again, that will be a conversation we will continue to have, just as we will have continues about arts funding. I'd like to end with a few comments, if you don't mind. I know it's been long, but rarely do I get the chance to be like the final one to talk. So you're all trapped, okay? I want to end with a quote, one of my quotes from Andrew Carnegie. "The best means of benefiting the community is to place within its reach the ladders upon which the aspiring can rise." Between 1886 and 1919, Carnegie's donations of more than $40 million paid for over 1,600 new library buildings in communities, large and small, across the United States of America. Many are still operational. We have one beautiful example right here in our county seat in Oregon City. They continue their original roles of being libraries and community centers. Libraries are the bedrock of our democracy. It is the one place where anyone can go in and get free and open access to information at any level, and they, to me, are probably one of the most important services we provide to the citizens of our county. And I appreciate all the library folk because you're gentle-hearted- Um, and I appreciate all the library folk because you're gentle-hearted, wonderful people. And the tone today with you here was just, uh, very uplifting, so thank you so much for that. And Grover said something to me, uh, in the beginning that I hadn't realized, but with two libraries, the original plan was to have one big one. But with these two libraries, if we do two, we will be meeting the American Library Association standards with the square footage of two of them to really meet, uh, the needs of this community, so of the whole community in the area. They're going to be close together, but between the two of them, uh, that service will happen. So thank you for telling me that, Grover, I, I hadn't quite realized that. Um, I had to make a difficult decision today, I'm assuming, um, with, uh, with short-term rentals, so, uh, I know it was difficult, it was hard on me. Uh, I will tell people, if you need to speak with me about it, please give me a call. Uh, if you are angry with me over that, I understand it, but part of this job sometimes is just to take the tomatoes and take it on the chin, and I will do to the best of my ability to explain to you again what my thoughts were on this. And I do trust my colleagues here, uh, to continue the conversation. Um, and I am sorry I disappointed you, Commissioner Savas, you're a good friend and buddy, but I do think it's better to start with a clean slate at this point. Finally, I'm going to mention, uh, housing and let people know, we have unfortunately been in the newspaper lately with, with what I perceive to be, um, misinformation and very unkind misinformation. And I am profoundly, profoundly disappointed and upset, uh, in many ways with our colleagues at Metro. We have been working very hard to get dollars out to those most vulnerable in our community with supported housing services. We've expanded services in our Veterans Village, emergency shelter operations, we're working on a hotel motel emergency shelter program, we're working on transitional mental health stabilization housing. And to imply that we are not moving fast enough and we are not spending money is unfair and, in my opinion, extremely mean-spirited. Poor people are not political pawns, is what I think disturbs me the most. For us to virtue signal, we will take care of our homeless in this county, we will continue to provide those wraparound services. And now I'm going to say some even harsher things. The supportive housing services measure, we did, this county did pass the sticks and bricks measure. The SHS measure did not pass in our county, it did pass in Multnomah, and it did pass in Washington County. I believe the reason it didn't pass was because we were in COVID, people were tired, there was a great deal of uncertainty in this county, we had been through so much, COVID, wildfires, ice storms. There was no, uh, I think, ability for people to, to really even think clearly about this. However, as your commission and your commissioners, and I want the media to know this, and I want our colleagues at Metro to be aware of this, we knew that as being part of a regional group, that we would implement these dollars, and we will do it to the best of our ability, and we will do it in our timing to make sure that we were not overborrowing. We did borrow $5 million from Metro, but we tracked very diligently the dollars that were coming in to get a sense of what the cash flow was. That was prudent management, because we want to get this right. These people are poor, they're homeless, they need our help, we know that. And to be criticized in a way, I, I am, I'm just absolute, absolutely just, for me, I rarely get angry in this job, I've been doing it too long, but I'm, I'm pretty close, pretty close to that, and I want people to be aware of that. We will continue to do everything we do, and I will remind our colleagues to the north as well, that this measure, one of the issues I had with it, uh, it was within the urban growth boundary of Metro. And when they were running this as a political campaign, this isn't about, I mean, I, I always astounded when we make this political, when we're doing human services to people, it's unbelievable to me. Well, they were telling people that, you know, the money would stay in their community, well, that wasn't accurate. The people in Estacada who worked within the urban growth boundary, that money did not go back to Estacada, it did not, it did not go back to Cambie. It didn't go back to those outlying cities, it stayed within the urban growth boundary. So why you would tell people, you should have told them, in my mind, I'm upset because of the truth. Now, does it mean that, that we are not going to use that money within, of course we are. But I felt very strongly, they didn't care a fig about the homelessness and the poverty in our outlying rural areas, and we know for a fact that there are major pockets of poverty and houselessness in Cambie and Estacada and other areas. And I hope this message gets out to them. And also with this, that I had found so disturbing, and I have talked to the people that ran this campaign about it, was that we couldn't take additional dollars. So in other words, if we had more incoming money, we weren't necessarily allowed to maybe try and do some other things in those other areas. And that became a bone of contention as we negotiated, uh, the intergovernmental agreement with this. So I am upset, we will continue to do the job, and I am going to remind my colleagues and our colleagues up north, when I ran a 60-acre farm and I had no housing for people that worked for me, I had, I drove them, the people that helped me were the Benedictine Sisters of Mount Angel, and we got people housed, and that was back in the 80s. So if you want virtue signaling, don't try that with me. I have been working on these issues for years, and I will not tolerate that kind of unfair criticism and the mean-spiritedness of how our county works to help the most vulnerable. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.